Good evening, everyone. I'm now calling to order this meeting of Lancaster City Council for August 26, 2025. A few reminders at the top of the meeting this evening. This meeting and its participants are being recorded. Please take a moment to silence your phones and devices if you haven't done so already. During this meeting, we will have opportunities for public comment. The first general public comment period is for residents that have registered in advance to speak about items that are not on the agenda. Residents may also comment on individual items on our legislative agenda, which is item nine on the agenda tonight. Finally, a second public comment period will be at the end of the agenda for any other speakers wishing to address council. All speakers will be reminded to please begin with their name and their block of residence for our meeting record and address their comments toward council. Please be advised that public comment is not a question and answer period. All comments are limited to three minutes per speaker. And to keep time, I will be using this light here. It will turn green when the speaker begins. It will flash yellow when there is one minute remaining and flash red when three minutes has been exhausted. If a speaker continues after three minutes, they will be asked to end their comments. I appreciate everyone's cooperation in keeping equal time and maintaining order. Speakers addressing city council, members of the public, and members of council are expected to conduct themselves in an orderly manner and remain respectful of others. And now for all of those who are willing and able, please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. Mr. Harris, would you please call the role of members?
Yes, Madam President. Mr. Royo.
Here.
I'm sorry, Mr. Ahmed. Mr. Gleese.
Here.
Ms. Craig. Ms. Diaz.
Here.
Mr. Hirsch.
Here.
And President Baker.
Here. Councilors Ahmed and Craig are excused this evening. We will move then to the approval of our minutes from the August 12, 2025, regular meeting of council.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Councilors, any comments on our meeting minutes? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Mr. Gleese.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
And President Baker.
Aye. Councilors, before we continue on with our agenda, I would like to ask your consent to move the report of the President of Council to this point in the meeting. Are there any objections from council? Thank you so much for that. I asked to do this because I do have an item under that part of the agenda that I'd like to speak to this evening. So the first part of the report is a motion. I would like to make a motion that council direct the Solicitor and the Planning Bureau to draft a zoning ordinance amendment in accordance with applicable law to legislatively address the land use of data centers to protect the impacts on the community for presentation at the October committee meeting. Further, council requests that the City Planning Commission review the proposed legislation and make recommendations to council regarding the same.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Members of council, I'm presenting this motion this evening so we can begin the process of updates to our zoning ordinance to address the land use for data centers and in fact introduce a separate use. As part of this process, leading up to this, leading up to council considering this ordinance, a hearing will be held, as with all zoning ordinance amendments, to solicit input and concerns from the public. That hearing will be held in accordance with the requirements of the municipality's planning code, which will also include review of the proposed ordinance by the Lancaster County Planning Commission as required. Are there any additional comments on the motion?
Council President.
Councilor Royo.
Just wanted to thank you for making this motion. I think as many folks are probably here tonight for, I think it's probably long overdue that we start considering our zoning and what does it mean and how does it reflect the community that we want to build here. So I'm looking forward to hearing the recommendations from the Planning Commission.
Thank you. Further comments from council?
If I may, President.
Council Diaz.
Will there be opportunity for the members of the community to speak against or for anything that they feel that is not in core, basically possibly not in the way they wish to have this proposal plan be done for the IA data center?
Yes, Council Diaz, the process of, this will be an ordinance that we will move to, we will discuss. So it will be presented at a committee meeting in October, as mentioned in the motion. It will be presented for a first reading in front of council and then a second reading, which will also include a public hearing, which is required. The Planning Commission will review the legislation, so they will also discuss it at their public meeting. So there will be several, at least four, if not additional, public input, places where there could be input from the public on any proposed ordinance that comes out of this action.
Would there be anyone from the Core, I think it's called CoreWar data company that's going to be available to speak or answer any questions to the public?
I'm not necessarily sure about that because that's going to depend on the process, the process that will be used to make these recommendations and draft the ordinance. I want to stress that it is not specifically about this project. It's about all projects, including theirs. So we do want to address issues about the environmental impacts and impacts of the community, but it is also about any future use. So it's not exclusive, but certainly does include their project.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Thank you. And councilors, I would also just note that I thank you for your patience in getting to this moment. There is always legal considerations and things that need to be put in place, and so I'm glad we've arrived at this moment where we can take this action. Further comments from council on the motion? Comments from the public on the motion? Good evening. If you want to just come on up to that mic, and you may need to turn it on if you're, as you're the first speaker.
Hello?
Good evening.
Yes, I'm Frank Arcollio from Old Trinity Place. I have heard that any ordinance or amendment to the zoning code that would be introduced or requested by council, go to the Planning Commission, and then be a draft of a suggested ordinance, come out of that, and then obviously be presented to council for adoption, that that is the process. But I've also been told that that ordinance would not apply to the existing two proposed data centers because they have already received approval letters from the city of Lancaster. And if that is the case, it gives me the feeling that you are willing, we are willing to close the barn door long after the horses have escaped. And that is not okay with the public. I hope that I am mistaken, and I know this is not a question and answer period, and nobody is required to address that concern, but it's very different as to whether we're going to go through this process for those two centers, or let me put it this way, go through a zoning process based on the new zoning amendments that would presumably be approved by the council versus not being able to do that. And that, I think, is really what we have been, we the public have been after all along, to not do it in secret and with no public comment at all, to put the whole thing through the proper process that any special use or use not provided for would be entitled to. So, thank you.
Thank you for your comments. I do appreciate your question and your concern, and what I can answer for this evening for the general public to know is that we would make the zoning amendment fully enforceable to the extent that it would be allowed to be. I don't know the specifics, but that's what I can say. I will also say, there was something you said at the end that I wanted to address, and now I can't recall what it was. It's completely left my mind. I apologize for that. But I do want to say that it will be fully enforceable. And the intention, the intention, that's what it was. The intention is that it would become, or my hope is that it would become a conditional use that would require approvals and special exceptions that would require public input. Thank you. Any additional comments from the public on the motion? Good evening.
Good evening. Dan Weigel, Clarion and Drive. I'm usually a speak with notes type, so please bear with me. But first, I want to thank the council for bringing this up. As you said, I think better late than never. I'm very pleased with what you just said about it being enforceable for the current projects. Obviously, we have been extremely concerned, as I know, I believe you have all been as well. So I really look forward to working with you all in this process. I urge you all to approve the motion unanimously tonight, and we're ready to get to work. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments on the motion from the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Mr. Gleese.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
And President Baker.
Aye. Thank you, councilors. I have a second part of my report of the President of Council, so I will continue as that's what we're addressing. It's tangential. I have asked the mayor to continue to update me on efforts by the data center developer Carissa Technology Parks to address air quality and noise concerns. So she could not be here this evening, but the mayor has provided me with the following updates. So first and foremost, an independent evaluation of the noise study that was completed by Carissa is moving forward. The city has identified a second consultant for consideration and interview, and that will take place within the next two weeks. So we're making sure very carefully that the firm that is hired to do that review is well-versed in specifically noise concerns for data centers. So we want to make sure that their review is accurate. Second, an interview with an environmental consulting firm will take place this week. Their work is going to help us understand how the DEP will regulate air emissions and the nature of the permit that was requested by this developer. Because this is under their purview, the city does not issue those types of permits. We don't have the technical expertise, so we are going to get someone who does have that expertise to review it. It's also going to review how the permit is monitored and forced and granted. In addition, the administration has determined that Carissa will not be using a cooling system that relies on huge volumes of water. Carissa has expressed willingness just this week to codify this in a legally binding community benefits agreement, so to put their money where their mouth is. Additional information from PPL has been given regarding impacts to the power grid, electricity rates, power reliability, and that has been updated on the frequently asked questions page on the city website. That's cityoflancasterpa.gov/datacenter. Please note that the city does not have any purview over the regulation of electricity rates, as much as I wish we could, their grid, et cetera. So we're relying on the information provided by PPL for this matter, for the council and the public's awareness. Also, just a note on this topic, that late last week, Mr. Frank Arcollio has filed an appeal to the zoning hearing board, and that appeal has been scheduled for September the 22nd. So again, that's to the zoning hearing board. Councilors, that concludes my report of council. Thank you for allowing me to move that forward in the agenda tonight. Next on our agenda is proclamations, honors, awards, and resolutions of recognition, confirming, Mr. Harris, we have none of those this evening.
That's correct, Madam President.
Thank you so much. We now move then to our first public comment period. It's reserved for residents who have contacted the city clerk before tonight's meeting to request the opportunity to address council. Mr. Harris is going to be putting on the screen the list of those residents that contacted us ahead of time and the order in which they were received, so you'll know when you're coming up in the meeting. Again, please address your comments toward council. Comments are limited to three minutes per speaker, and please begin with your name and block of residence. Mr. Harris, our first speaker, please.
Our first speaker is Irene Grevas.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Irene Grevas, and I'm on the 400 block of West End Avenue. I am here today to raise an issue that has gone unresolved for four years. This prolonged and unexplained condemnation of my property located on 901 Manor Street. This has placed a tremendous amount of burden on me personally and needlessly removed a home from an already strained housing supply. Last month, I approached Councilwoman Faith Craig before city council meeting to ask for her support in introducing a petition for resolution regarding this matter. Conveniently, she's not here. She responded by asking me to email her a draft of the petition, which I did in good faith, promptly and respectfully. Despite multiple follow-ups and email and messages, I have received no response. This silence especially troubling because Councilwoman Craig has personally visited my home in 2022. She knows the conditions firsthand and understands why no action has not been possible on me and this ongoing condemnation. I reached out, not just for help, but because I believed this was a shared concern and a resolvable and a solvable issue. At this time, I can't help but notice the spread and ease, or the speed and ease in which permits for AI data centers have been approved by the city easily, often with little resistance or delay. Yet every one of my 11 separate permit applications to resolve this matter and move forward with the property has been denied. This is happening during an ongoing housing crisis where the need for affordable, livable housing is more urgent than ever. My property, which has been rehabilitated and restored as a home, has effectively been taken off the market, but not for safety reasons, but through prolonged inaction and bureaucratic resistance. We cannot keep saying we care about affordable housing while actively preventing it from becoming reality. I am asking council, and specifically Councilwoman Craig, to respond, to act, and to help break this deadlock so the property can serve its purpose, providing a home to the community that's so desperately needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, our next speaker.
Next speaker is Mary Jones.
Mary Jones? I'll call the names at the end, just in case they come in late. Our next speaker?
Next is Marta Neves.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Marta Neves, and I'm here today to address the council regarding the Treasury Office's misapplied payments for trash and water accounts. I own several properties in the city and been fighting with the Treasury Office since 2023 for payments that I have made on time, have been misapplied, have been sent to collections, and at the present moment, going through it again, after just going through it in April. So at this point, I've been told that the penalty assessment cannot be overwritten by the new system. And by the way, the payments that just were sent on July 25th were through the new system, and they were ACH. So I believe that the issues are human error. I don't know, I come from a finance background, accounting background, and I believe that this is not system-related. I think the errors are human-related, and I would like to know if the council and I can work together on a solution.
Thank you. I did have some additional information on your request that I'd like to share with you. The email, the email that you used to request to make comment, would that be okay?
Yes.
We don't have to discuss it publicly, but I can send you what I know, have found. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Harris, our next speaker.
Next speaker is Emma Burgess.
Hi, don't laugh at me, I brought props.
Good evening.
Emma Burgess, 600 block of Vine Street. So before I start, I would like to make it clear, council, that I know you don't regulate electric utilities. My three minutes today only serve to highlight the impacts of building this data center and to further reinforce the urgency of our demands. If I could, just really quick, to the people in the room, I would like you to remember that if you have concerns about electricity issues, the Pennsylvania Utility Commission is the governing body that you should be speaking to, and they also hold biweekly hearings in Harrisburg, which I would strongly encourage you to attend. Back to council. I've got three things I'd like to address today. Back to council. I've got three things I'd like to address today. First, let's talk about the increased cost to residents that a data center would bring. For scale, the sum of Lancaster County activity has a load of about 700 megawatts on average, which implies a peak load of about 1,000 megawatts. Anyways, this data center would have a continuous load of 100 and then 300 megawatts, which would mean increasing the load by 10 to 30 percent. This is huge. So increasing the demand for power means we have to upgrade our electrical infrastructure to support it. Carissa, the developer, has said that they're upgrading the necessary infrastructure. That's great. Next, we'd have to maintain the significantly larger grid. The money for that comes from the delivery portion of your electrical bill. Last month, that portion for me was about 40 percent, as shown there. Here's the catch, though. Industrial customers pay significantly less than residential customers. I know that the FERC ruling to 2023 governs a formula. It's, you know, intentionally ambiguous. Industrial customers pay about 44 percent as much as residential customers. This means that the increased cost for grid maintenance will be disproportionately passed on to residents. You can all expect your bill to go up. Second, let's talk about power quality. I know this isn't something most people think or even know about, but your power's quality matters. AC power is a sine wave. When it looks good, it looks like this. When it looks bad, it looks like this. It's due to something called harmonics. Last year, Bloomberg published a report using thousands of sensors measuring power quality across the nation. They compiled a list of the homes that suffered the worst power degradation and said that more than half of the tract households showing the worst distortions of power quality were located within 20 miles of significant data center activity. This kind of distorted power leads to damage to home appliances in the long run. It's not something you see immediately, but it's something that adds up, as well as increased risks of things like electrical fires. Finally, ah, shoot, it's orange. I'd want to address the challenge that's brought on by having a sole consumer represent so much of the grid. Data centers are optimized and engineered for the protection of computers, which means that at the smallest risk of a problem, they switch to local backup generators. That means that in an instant, something that's like 300 megawatts would, and hold for my beautiful animation, go offline, which would decrease the load in this grid from something like 1,200 megawatts to 900. Because data, because power grids have to be super-balanced, that's a big problem all at once, which can cause, you know, cascading outages across the grid. I know that engineers work really hard to balance this, but that is a problem that needs to be addressed.
Thank you very much.
I hope this is helpful. I didn't cite any sources. They're here if you want them.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, our next speaker, please.
Our next speaker is Tobin Burgess.
Okay. Thank you very much. Our next speaker, Mr. Harris.
Sarah Eder Inahosa.
Good evening.
Hi. My name is Sarah Eder Inahosa. I'm from the 400th block of West Frederick. I'm probably going to end up yielding most of my time because you guys address a lot of our concerns. So I'll just boil it down to three things. Number one, I want to express appreciation for some of the things you announced tonight, specifically codifying that there won't be water cooling for this facility. Thank you for announcing that. That's really incredible. And also for the work you're doing on zoning. We want to express that the work you do does matter to us, and we're not just here to express when we're upset about things. A few other things, though. Number two, I am still concerned about enforceability of, I'm not an expert in local governance in these things, but it is my understanding that a zoning ordinance would not be enforceable, and I would love to hear more about why that is your position. Number three, the main issue that the council doesn't have any ability to really mitigate is the energy issue that Emma just lent her incredible expertise and design skills to. And we're still really concerned about that, and we totally understand that council does not have a lot that they can offer to this fight. But what we would really love is your support in bringing the fight to the bodies that can. I mean, most of us here have full-time jobs and families. Like, we're doing this in our free time. And so we would really love the support of our elected officials as we're bringing it to the state, as we're bringing it to regulatory bodies like the PUC. Because again, we're doing this in our free time. So we would love to see, instead of just maybe we can't do anything about that, support and collaboration on taking it to the bodies that can. So that's all I have to say. I'll yield the rest of my time. Thank you for the announcements you made earlier.
Thank you very much. Sarah, I appreciate your comments, and I would absolutely love to go to a PUC hearing because that is where I'm mostly concerned and where I feel most powerless. I'll also remind the public that council is part-time, and we all have full-time jobs, too. That's okay. I hear your comments, so thank you. Mr. Harris, our next speaker.
Our next speaker is Ravi Ahuja.
Ravi, good evening.
My name is Ravi Ahuja. I live on the 200th block of West Walnut. Like many people here, I'm obviously very affected by and concerned about the development of the data center. I want to echo Sarah's appreciations and some things that Dan said as well about some of the things announced tonight. I think the noise level study is really important and welcome. The codifier of the water cooling, also very important. We appreciate the opportunity for public comment. It's also something that is critically important to be an ongoing process. And so I just want to strongly urge the Mayor Sarachi and Zoning Commissioner Thrash our attendance at the transparency hearing October 1st. We'd love to know the full details about all the decisions that were made for the zoning, so we'd really appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, our next speaker.
Next speaker is Kim Keller.
Is Kim Keller here? We'll go back and recall those names at the end. Our next speaker, Mr. Harris.
Next is Dan Weigel.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Harris.
Next is Michelle Sales.
Good evening.
Good evening. Can you hear me all right?
Yep.
Hi all, I'm Michelle Sales. I live in Lydditz. I want to add to the conversation on AI data centers. I know a lot has already been said about the environmental and financial costs, which are huge on their own. I want to draw some attention also to what these data centers can be empowering with potential costs to our collective civil liberties, privacy, and security. So we should all know that this data center infrastructure is going to directly support a lot of major tech companies like Meta, Palantir, Amazon. I want to focus my comments right now on Palantir because at the same time that our federal government is starving people of needed funding for essential programs, it has found plenty of money to prop up the private sector with these massive government contracts. So when we say that AI is the future, we need to be really clear about what the technology is and what we're going to be using these data centers for. So Palantir has been the recipient of billions in federal contracts. They have a new 10-year, $10 billion contract with the Army. They're collaborating with DOGE. There's a $30 million partnership with ICE, which is already targeting folks in our community. And I'm going to share some sections of an open letter that was published in May from Palantir former staffers and whistleblowers calling out the company for colluding with the authoritarian consolidation that is underway. And they say, "Palantir Technologies' platform grants immense power to its users, helping control the data, decisions, and outcomes that determine the future of governments, businesses, and institutions, and by extension, all of us. Early Palantir staff understood the ethical weight of building these technologies. A code of conduct was crafted to uphold democracy, preserve the spirit of free scientific inquiry, and ensure responsible AI development. Guardrails were set to prevent discrimination, disinformation, and abuses of power, and these principles have now been violated and are rapidly being dismantled at Palantir Tech and across Silicon Valley. Palantir's leadership has abandoned its founding ideals. Public statements have grown hostile to DEI. Executives now employ inflammatory language, sometimes threatening critics with violence. Meanwhile, our democracy faces escalating threats. Biometrics data collection on immigrant children. Journalists targeted science programs, defunded key U.S. allies like Ukraine sidelined. Trump's administration has sought to greatly expand executive powers while alluding to monarchy. Big tech, including Palantir, is increasingly complicit, normalizing authoritarianism under the guise of a revolution led by oligarchs, and we must resist this trend," and they go on. "We no longer believe Palantir's executives are upholding our core values by supporting the administration, DOGE, and dangerous expansions of executive power. They've abandoned their responsibility and are in violation of our code of conduct." So thank you for the developments tonight. To keep in mind that we can revisit the zoning process moving forward, and I think as we all work to shape this process and how these projects shape up, we need to be careful to not assume that all AI development is beneficial and that we should have a say in building a future that we can all benefit from.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, our next speaker, please.
Next speaker is Brittany Sowers.
Brittany Sowers, Harrisburg Pike. So I'm just here tonight as a concerned business owner who would be directly impacted by one of the data centers. I co-own a hair salon on Harrisburg Pike, directly across from one of the proposed data centers, and it's something that, you know, we've been very concerned about. You know, is our electric going to go up? I'm glad we heard tonight about the water, that they're not going to be using water, you know, because a lot of the research we did, we saw, you know, it can cause water issues. We need water to run our business. So yeah, I'm just here to express my concern as a small business owner of what the impacts are going to be to my business.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Harris.
Next speaker is Joella Lord.
Is Joella Lord here? I'll recall the names at the end. Our next speaker, Mr. Harris.
David Miller Glick.
Let's see, David, I thought. Good evening.
Good evening.
Yeah, feel free to move that.
Apologies if this doesn't come across as very polished. I'm changing some of my comment on the fly here, based on what was said earlier. I feel a mixture of emotion tonight. I was angered by the lack of transparency around the AI data center center, but on the other hand, I'm heartened to see that council is considering looking at the zoning. And I want to echo some comments said before that I would love to see continuing collaboration with city council going forward. I'm also concerned about the potential energy usage and about bills going up, but also from an environmental perspective, the amount of energy that uses and the cost in the environment that it would create to generate that energy. I also want to close by saying that I quite frankly do not want any new AI centers, data centers built anywhere near the city of Lancaster. I work in the tech industry, and in my opinion and experience, generative AI is a scam which offers few benefits, if any, to regular people like me. But at the very least, if this center or both centers are to be built, I would love to collaborate with city council going forward so that we can come to a good solution together. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Harris.
Next is Frank Arcoglio.
Good evening.
Frank Arcoglio, Ultrinity Place. I had come with props tonight to put a little levity to the situation. I want to show you two different balls. One's a football, I think we can agree on that. The other's a baseball. They're both balls, but they have very different usages, and they're in very, very different sports, and they're thrown and caught in very, very different ways. I feel the same thing is true about data centers versus warehouses. And so, so how could that possibly be done? If this is a data center, this is a warehouse. They are not the same thing and should never, ever have been called the same thing. As I've said before, I appreciate your efforts and your action tonight to request new zoning ordinances to deal with the data centers. My concern is whether it really is retroactively applicable to building permits that have already been issued under the guise that these two things were the same, which they're clearly not. So I guess I need to await further clarification. I know that's not, you know, your job. I know you say you intend to apply it to the maximum effectiveness that is legally possible, and I understand that. And I just hope that that effectiveness is substantial and not based on the confusion that, intentional or otherwise, that these are the same things. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Mr. Harris.
Next speaker is John Tel Tolan.
Good evening.
Good evening. John Tel Tolan, first and only block of Wise Ave. I had some, I changed up what I had said a little bit because of the things that you had spoke about earlier. So thank you for addressing the need for dialogue and starting the meeting that way. Our communities are thriving, diverse, and deeply, community and deeply invested in this issue. The perspectives shared in the last meeting added critical context that can't be ignored. We have an opportunity to set an example for other cities by standing up to big tech and prioritizing our environment, health, and future that starts with transparency and real accountability. Where can the public access independent third-party studies, or when can they be made available? The city's website says the PA Department of Environmental Protection is reviewing an air quality permit submitted by the developer for diesel generators and that Lancaster is monitoring the process, but monitoring is not the same as accountability. If you are conducting independent reviews, then we look forward to public access to the findings from independent reviews. Who from our community, not corporate representatives, has been directly consulted about this project and is their record? Who will be held personally accountable if these facilities harm residents or the environment? If you are truly committed to Lancaster, I would love to see you put your commitments in writing for the public to see. We need to reclassify these data centers and prevent any more from coming. The city should rescind permits immediately and restart the zoning process with public input. Tonight's agenda includes a motion to amend the zoning ordinance to properly regulate data centers. Let's pass it and move swiftly. You said something about October, but I think that's a bit far away to be discussing this, and I think this is a more urgent issue. It's about more than permits. It's about trust. If decisions have already been made, share them. Share your thoughts, your reasoning, your humanity. People want to believe in their leaders, but these days especially, trust is fragile and transparency is the only way forward. The community does not want any more backroom discussions. Has anyone from this council personally reached out to the residents who spoke last time or previous times? Responding to emails, having real conversations, and showing that you've done your homework would go a long way. The public needs to see that beyond this one meeting today. Thank you for the information, and I would love to see this continue. I would love to see actual dialogue with the public ahead of town hall-style meetings and the ones that you're referring to in October. We are here to continue holding you accountable and work together to push these tech giants out. Half a million lives in this county are at stake. We cannot stay silent on this, and we will not. So work with us and keep working with us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Harris, I believe that confirms our list of speakers for the first public comment period. Is that correct?
I'm sorry, Madam President.
That concludes the list of speakers?
Yes.
Thank you. I want to take a moment to follow up and ask if Mary Jones or Kim Keller are here. Their names were called earlier, but they were not here when their names were called, so. If not, we will close the first public comment period, and thank you for everyone who commented this evening. We will continue with the rest of our agenda. I know that some of you may be here for just that particular portion of the meeting, so you're welcome to go if you need to. You're also welcome to stay. So thank you. The next item on our agenda will be the capital budget public hearing. So Director Tina Campbell will be coming forward, and I believe, councilors, earlier she sent what she will be presenting on the screen. Is that correct? So we'll have it in email and on the screen. I'll give everybody just a moment. Good evening to both Directors. Campbell.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harris. All right. Good evening.
Good evening. So tonight, we are holding the capital budget hearing. This is based on the capital improvement plan for 2026 to 2030. This hearing is based on what was presented both on June 24th and July 22nd. The plan outlines capital improvement projects from 2026 to 2030 that are necessary for all functions of the city. It encompasses four city funds: the general fund, the stormwater fund, the water fund, and the sewer fund. This five-year plan includes 144 projects within these funds for a total of approximately $300 million. These projects consist largely of maintenance or replacement of current infrastructure to ensure that all services provided by the city are functioning as effectively as possible for both residents and customers. And as we've already discussed in June and in many more details in July, the projects range from ensuring the projects range from ensuring a safe streets for pedestrians and cyclists to a replacement of a major water main transmission pipe, which is a once, once-in-a-generation project. Um, as part of the Home Rule Charter, the city administration will present a five-year plan annually, um, for approval through city council. Additionally, we will also report to council quarterly for updates on the plan starting in 2026. Should a newly construction, constructed or acquired facility be completed within the previous quarter, um, the city administration will also report on estimated annual costs for running and maintaining that facility as we have those available. And additionally, throughout this quarterly reporting process, the city administration will provide any updates related to annual amortization costs as additional debt is incurred. Um, the plan available for review online, um, it through the website and also on the Engage Lancaster, um, site, it includes funding for the current approved, um, general, from the current approved general obligation bonds and the current approved Penn loan, Penn Vest loan financing. Um, and the current debt for each fund, uh, which has already been approved through the ordinance are included in the plans for your review as well. And within this five-year budget, there are some expenses that are not yet funded and may need, uh, additional debt financing as we move towards the latter years of the plan. Um, as the amount of this funding becomes finalized, the city administration will report on the amortization costs of the debt in the quarterly updates to council. And as with any plan, these projects will continue to evolve once they begin or as they continue. More precise estimates and funding sources will be included in future capital improvement plans as we move closer to the start date of some of the later projects. And we're looking forward to providing those updates quarterly. If you can go to the next slide. Um, because we've reviewed the capital improvement plan and budget extensively on both June 24th and July 22nd, I'm not gonna spend very much time reviewing this again, um, but just wanted to provide a high-level summary again. So, these slides, um, there's just a few of them. Um, they are, they are also available in the documents that have been available online for review. Um, and that, in addition to, uh, the full list of projects and all of the details that go with each project, um, including both the, um, expenses by year and the funding sources. So, there are 144 projects total, as I have mentioned. And you can see here the breakdown by general fund and the enterprise funds. Next slide, please. Um, the 144 capital projects include, um, included on the plan total approximately 301.4 million dollars. Um, we have, we have the projects divided into six sections on this chart, but three of the sections, um, the parks, PW or Public Works and Admin, um, and Streets are all part of the general fund. And then the other three sections are labeled based on the enterprise fund that they're associated with. And as we've discussed previously, you can see that the water and sewer funds have the biggest needs. That makes up approximately two-thirds of the costs. This is not unusual for water and sewer facilities since these utilities rely so heavily on major infrastructure, um, to function properly. Um, however, this does create some challenges of containing debt payment costs and keeping fees reasonable as we try to ensure that the systems work well. Next slide, please. So, here's a quick breakdown of each of the funds, um, the general fund and the three enterprise funds. And I'll just, um, say as a reminder, the city does run a fourth enterprise fund, the solid waste and recycling fund. Um, but most of those services are, are contracted out, so capital costs and projects are not included in the capital improvement plan for that fund. Next slide, please. Um, and also, as I mentioned previously, each project must identify a funding source, or in many cases, uh, for the projects, it's funding sources, um, that can be used to ensure that the project is completed. So, we've included 11 funding sources in our capital improvement plan, though some of these are groupings rather than specific sources. Um, the committed grant sources, as an example, are, are all grant funding that has been awarded, um, but it's made up of many individual grants. And additionally, we have an unfunded funding source that shows a need for funding, either grant or debt funding, but that source has not yet been identified. This unfunded source is used in the projects that are further out in the five-year plan, so three, four, or five years out. And each year that we come with a new capital improvement plan, uh, to approve, you'll see that start to move to a known funding source as those projects get closer to its start. Um, and each of the funding sources that we've intended to use are listed per project in the plan that's online, um, and that you've received as well. And then, next slide. And finally here, just to review a grouping of the funds, um, this is the funding sources. Um, so the first three categories are what we consider committed funding, um, so it does not require further debt. Um, we're currently at about 50.6 million, or 51.7 million, sorry, I had my note wrong. Um, and bond funding, um, that's, that's already confirmed. Um, you can see that the grant funding that we have committed as well as, uh, funding from our sewer partners, which are those first three. And the remaining percent, uh, the remaining amounts, which is about 53%, um, would need to be funded mainly by future debt, either through Penn Vest or bond financing. Some of what we've identified as unfunded, um, could also be eligible for grant funding. So, we'll continue to pursue the grant funding for projects that are eligible, um, to try to keep that future debt as low as possible. And then, just as a reminder, uh, we will present an ordinance for first reading for the capital budget at the September 9th regular meeting of council. And it'll go through the regular ordinance, ordinance process from there. Um, finally, tonight, we did have one comment on the plan that was included on the Engage Lancaster, uh, website. We've not received other comments or questions beyond that, so I've asked Director Steve Campbell to review that comment and respond this evening.
Thank you very, very much. The, the comment was related to the Water Street Infrastructure Project, which is a combined project of water, public right-of-way, transportation, stormwater, and active transportation network. The question was whether the arts component was funded in the, in the request. So, the, the project itself is a multiple, is a multiple-faceted project where approximately 3.6 million of that project is stormwater-related and nearly $11 million of it is related to water and sewer infrastructure, as well as public right-of-way infrastructure. And the project will take place over the course of a six-year period or more. The, the amount of, of work that we're anticipating for the, for the art element is very, very minor. We're looking at, uh, at sculptural elements for the green infrastructure, the, the four bays and the, and the, the rain gardens areas, uh, which would, would not exceed about, would be in a range from anywhere from $12,000 to $40,000 all told for the artwork. The, the, the person who had made the request referenced a project that was in Pittsburgh by a, uh, an artist for, uh, for the, for PennDOT that was extraordinarily much larger than the pro, than the art investment that we're looking at here. Um, it was for a very magnificent-looking, frankly, um, a sound attenuation wall that was almost a half-mile long, uh, on Route 28 outside of Pittsburgh. And it was trying to be evocative of water and sound and a variety of other things. It was very, very magnificent and et cetera. We're not looking to do anything like that. We're hoping that the work that we can do for arts may actually be tied to the schools with a STEM program, might be performed by some of the, some local, uh, with funding from so, some local, um, uh, some, uh, funders, local funders, as well as searching for, continuing to search for grants. When we had initially, initially, thought about this project, we were looking at grants that were, at the time, available at the federal level, but those grants are no longer available. But the intention for it to be beautified similar to what we've done with the storm, storm grates, paintings, or, uh, any kinds of elements that make the way that water passes through the, the variety of infrastructures of the city of Lancaster accessible visually and in knowledge to the public, whether youth or residents, et cetera, is still very much important to us. But we want to do it and need to do it at a much more modest level. So, the simple answer is that for, for the budgeting, for the funds that have been requested, it does not include the, um, the, the arts, the arts component.
Thank you very mu, much, both of you, um, for all of the work leading up to this moment and the work that will lie ahead as we, um, in future meetings, introduce an ordinance to adopt the capital budget. Uh, council, uh, members of council, any comments on the budget hearing this evening?
If I may, President.
Council Diaz.
Ms. Campbell, you had mentioned, um, previously when we were going over it, um, the budget, you had mentioned in regards to how much we invest in our technology and, and City Hall. Do you recall that?
I, I believe that was in the operating budget, is that?
Yes. Um, my question, I'm gonna divert it to this particularly. If we invest a lot in our community tax money for our city to run our technology, why is it that the AV is not working correctly? And why would someone schedule a meeting? And of course, I was to be present, but unfortunately, I was ill. And I said, well, since I was able to use it through our teams, that I would be able to, um, attend the meeting, which obviously, the response was that it's not working correctly. So, my concern is, how much do we invest in our IT? And when is it going to be fixed? Because it's been a pretty long time.
Yeah, I mean, I can speak to, um, it, do you want me to speak a little bit to the AV equipment, or?
Well, I can share what I know, uh, specifically related to the AV equipment and maybe just the technol, technological expenses overall, um, you can address. But, um, yes, so there, there has been money allocated for the AV equipment, um, for this year. Uh, there's a company that we've engaged to make long-needed upgrades, uh, to the equipment, which was, I believe, second-hand when, when we got it. Um, they are working, the, the timeline is to begin next week on the project. The reason why it waited was because they work with schools, uh, who took priority, uh, unfortunately, to get their AV up and running before the beginning of the school year, is my understanding. Um, so that project will begin next week. Unsure exactly when it will finish. My hope is by our September 9th meeting, but it, it's, it hard to say. Um, as someone in operations, I know that things come up and things change. Um, and in terms of how long it's been down, um, when you're talking about spending, you know, 50,000-plus on an AV system, in my opinion, uh, you wanna make sure you're buying the right one, getting the right people to install it, and making sure you have all the features you need. So, a few months with some mics that aren't ideal isn't ideal, but it is right when you wanna take the time. So, that's my opinion. And Tina, if you have any, or Director Campbell, if you have anything additional to add?
Yeah, um, yeah, thanks. I will just say too, that this is, we're actually purchasing the equipment with the grant that we received, so it's not coming out of the general operating fund, um, budget.
Thank you so much. Additional comments from council on the budget hearing? Then we will close the budget hearing for this evening. Uh, we look forward to having you bringing forward the official ordinance next month. Thank you. We will now move into our legislative agenda. Uh, we begin with the legislative budget transfers. I believe that's gonna come from Councilor Royo.
Thank you, co, excuse me. Thank you, Council President. Let's pull up my notes here. Thank you, Council President. Um, as you're aware, the city is self-insured for workers' compensation costs. And every year, funds to pay workers' compensation claims are included in the individual department budgets. Uh, but those claims are paid from the administrative services budget. So, each quarter, we shift money from the departments where those injured workers have made claims to the administrative services budget to cover the costs. For the second quarter of the year, workers' comp claims were made by the city police officers and public works employees. A total of $37,656.78 is being moved for, moved from those department budgets to administrative services. Because this money is being moved between departments, this requires city council approval. So, I make the motion to approve the second quarter workers' compensation transfers totaling $37,656.78 as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Counselors, any additional comments on the legislative transfers, budget transfers? Comments from the public? Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Mr. Gleese.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
President Baker.
Aye.
Next item on the agenda is items for the Historic Conservation District. Um, generally, these, uh, these come through the Community Planning, uh, Committee, and that would be Council Craig, Council Royo, in her place, if you would, uh, take this item.
Thank you, Council President.
Oh, I'm so sorry. Well, that goes to Mr. Harris, if you would read those for me.
Yes, Madam President.
Thank you.
Considering the following applications and recommendations from the Historical Commission for improvements to, uh, properties within the Heritage Conservation District. First is Kiana Castro, owner of 550 Hand Avenue, proposes construction of an uncovered stoop on the facade of a two-story brick row house. And the second is John E. Smucker III, owner of 39 North Plum Street, proposes construction of a one-story framed mudroom addition to the rear of a corner row house. And both of those applications were recommended for approval by the Historical Commission.
I'd like to make a motion to approve both items A and B, uh, for approval.
Second.
Thank you, we have a motion and a second. Councilor Royo.
Thank you, Council President. Uh, nothing much to add. Both of these items were recommended for approval by the Historic Commission, are very, uh, minor, um, uh, changes. So, nothing to add.
Thank you very much. Any additional council comments on the approvals? From the public. Hearing none, Mr. Harris.
Mr. Royo.
Aye.
Mr. Gleese.
Aye.
Ms. Diaz.
Aye.
Mr. Hirsch.
Aye.
And President Baker.
Aye.
That concludes our legislative agenda this evening. The next item on our agenda is our second public comment period. That's open for issues that were not previously addressed on the agenda.
That's open for issues that were not previously addressed on the agenda. Duration of comments is limited to three minutes per speaker. Please begin with your name and your block of residence. If there's anyone who wishes to make comment in this period, please proceed to the microphone at this time. Hearing none. Wow. Are you making public comment? Okay. If you would, please just turn the microphone back on, and you may adjust that to wherever you need that to go. Please begin with your name and block of residence. Good evening.
Good evening. Oakley-Buscarino-Lafayette Street. So I'm gonna, I wasn't a registered speaker at the beginning, but I'd like to make some comments about something I discussed earlier, which was the AI data center. I stood at this podium in March of this year discussing how AI is impacting our environment, encouraging small businesses to turn to PCAD, which is right next door, for human-made creative assets. Now, a $6 billion AI facility is threatening our community with its presence, and I find myself back here talking about the same thing. Lancaster is an emporium of small shops and cell phone businesses, its culture constructed off of individual creations by unique creatives. And outside of the city, you have acres upon acres of beautiful land and tasteful agriculture defining traditional Pennsylvania. I'd like to acknowledge the comments earlier about environmental preservation and limited use of water, but I'm not reassured as a resident, especially from the lack of transparency, that this center won't use a major amount of water and electricity. I've previously gone over how AI has impacted the job industry. 3,900 workers replaced by AI, according to the National University, in March. Entrepreneurs around the world have faced job loss, decreases in salary, and lack of opportunities in the market. As you heard tonight, the construction of the center alone will concern workers. Imagine the detrimental effect it'll have on future jobs in Lancaster. Let me remind you now of the consequences this data center will have on people who live here. To start, these data centers will use some sort of water for cooling, even if it's a limited amount, and while there are efforts to limit such, you're still using significant amount of water in a facility that's costing $6 billion to construct. Each text prompt consumes an ad-free water bottle. Globally, AI-related infrastructure may soon consume six times more than water than Denmark, a country of 6 million people, according to a study from the University of California. This becomes an issue when a quarter of humanity already lacks access to clean water and sanitation. Lancaster residents already struggle with increasing water bills. Are you okay with risking the lives of thousands of Lancaster residents just to give more money to big corporations instead of the people? Lastly, these data centers will emit waste such as CO2, lead, and mercury into our environment, quickening the effects of global warming. Whether you like it or not, it will suck up energy and water from Lancaster residents, leaving citizens to live with the consequences of your decisions. The power plant and backup generators needed to keep data centers working generate harmful air pollutants, such as fine particle matters of nitrogen oxides. These pollutants take an immediate toll on human health, triggering asthma symptoms, heart attacks, and even cognitive decline, according to the IEE spectrum. Despite efforts, a center at this scale cannot avoid causing environmental harm, and with lack of transparency until now, I have little faith that it'll cause little damage, as you say it does. Please continue to reassure the public with accessible information on these matters, but I'd like to thank you again for the comments earlier. Remember, at some point, us taxpayers will have to keep paying for the environment-killing data center, and clearly, nobody wants to do that. As you continue to fund this data center-
I appreciate your comments. We've gone past three minutes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any additional speakers for the second public comment period? Good evening.
Good evening.
Adjust that as needed. There you go.
Brett Stanley. I live in Mountainville, but I work in Lancaster. I spoke last, I think, last meeting. I've been here for all of them. I spoke on job creation and lack thereof, possibly, with the work in creating, you know, catalysts for the data centers. SW, my employer near Wrightsville, my old employer in Wrightsville, had a hand in building a lot of things for data centers, whether they be catalysts like SCRs, their selective, like, or SR. Basically, as one of the comments that you had made about the interruption of data center like output, one of the things that they also were making were these like rolling generators or rolling data centers to support these things. Basically, I'm just coming here to say, more information of, this seems like it's destined to happen, and basically, none of you had any say in it, and doesn't seem like we will have any say in it, retroactively addressing the concerns, not you guys, but the whole process in it of itself, like waiting till October, et cetera. But yeah, I would certainly like to stay on top of where this work is coming from, where it's going, and yeah, I'm just really disheartened that it seems like the work is already done, and it's just being us upon our community. I hope that you all can have some influence on that. I didn't really have a choice in like what I make, it's just custom fabrication, so you get a new job almost every day, new parts, but anyway, wasting a little bit of time. Thanks, that's all I had.
Thank you. Any additional comments for this period? Good evening.
Good evening. Hi, Jeannie Showers from Mountainville. First, I want to thank the council for addressing, you know, some of the questions that the public had had in previous meetings and so forth. I definitely think that it has assuaged some of our worries and concerns, especially with regards to the environmental impacts, specifically with water. However, moving forward, I do want to at least, you know, urge the council to be mindful of the enforceability of the proposed regulations with, you know, even though there will be an agreement, a legally binding agreement with water consumption, we want the public, we want to make sure that that is being maintained as objectively as possible. Additionally, we want to ensure that, moving forward, the environmental agencies that have been hired to conduct, you know, the noise studies and so forth, are, you know, unaffiliated with these data centers and with, you know, corporate backing behind it. We also want to ensure that, moving forward in the future, we want to ensure that when these data centers do potentially expand, that they remain within the footprint of the existing structure, as it is stated in the FQA online. And if they do expand beyond that, if the current or proposed zoning ordinances that are likely to be changed, that the expansion is in accordance with those newer zoning ordinances. And lastly, just wanting to urge the council to be mindful of the strain on the energy grid. I like, like you had mentioned previously, even though you do not have control over the energy within Lancaster, I am curious, as a resident, what will be done with the grid in order to bolster it so that it can support not only the data center, but the residents as well, which will have, you know, the largest impact from these data centers. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other commenters for this period? Good evening.
Good evening. My name is Mick Widrick. I live just outside the city on Columbia Ave. I just wanted to request the council's help in pressuring the zoning officer and the mayor in showing up to any of the hearing, hearings that are being proposed. As I've heard from other sources, the zoning officer has no interest in showing up to those and answering questions, which feels shady, and I don't like that. And I'm sure we would all love some answers from the actual people involved in making these decisions that we know you guys weren't allowed to be involved in. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional commenters for this period? I would encourage anyone else who wishes to just line up, just so we can save a couple of minutes if possible, but that's your prerogative. Good evening.
I was here a little bit ago. I don't know my block number, but-
That's okay.
67 South Franklin. Anyways-
And your name, sorry.
Roe Potter.
Thank you.
I don't plan on pulling any punches with this one, so I'm going to try and be quick. But artificial intelligence is the tool of fascism. Everything ranging from AI images to generative texts to Palantir, all plays into their, they being fascists, authoritarian agenda. Despite water cooling and emissions being supposedly regulated, which isn't enough to comfort me, or really, anyone in here who's been paying attention to anything going on with XAI down in Memphis, Tennessee, yeah, it's just not convincing enough. And stuff like this, like, like I said about Memphis, Tennessee with XAI, stuff like this disproportionately affects black and brown communities, which we have a majority of in Lancaster. And day in and day out, we are not only pushed and edged further out by gentrification and, you know, the way we treat homelessness is absolutely terrible in the 25 years I've been here. I just think that something like this has no belonging in Lancaster County at all. It doesn't benefit the people that live here. Our water is already questionable. Our energy is already questionable. My, who else's rent is going up, right? My rent's up. My water is the same. It tastes the same, but stuff like this really has no place in Lancaster County at all. I don't see how we can take time to put a supposed warehouse of supercomputers when we start potholes right next door to it. It doesn't make any sense. If we want to improve what's going on in the city and, you know, energy-related things, I don't think putting a giant succubus in the middle of it is going to help anything. Yeah, I just really want to stand on the fact that artificial intelligence is the tool of fascism. If you want proof of that, look at the White House's Twitter posts. There's not an artist you could hire out here in the world that would do art of alligator Alcatraz, you know, historically, when black and brown communities had been disproportionately affected by stuff like that. Yeah, just really disgusted that this is coming to our community in a place where we value not only what we create with our hands, but who we give it to, and AI doesn't do any of that. It takes away who's making it, and it don't give a shit who's it going to. So if you care about living here, which I'm pretty sure you do, this ain't going to happen. But again, like someone else said here, it don't seem like we got much of an opinion or decision, so kind of authoritarian and oppressive. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional comments for this period? Hearing none, I'll close the second public comment period and thank everyone for participating this evening. We do have a few more items on the agenda, just as a response to some of the latest comments. I also was thinking about some shared concerns that I believe we all have, and just a thought that I would leave everyone, that we should also be very concerned about our borough councils and township boards of supervisors in the rest of Lancaster County in places that have vast amounts of open space. I'm not saying this from a place that I know of anything, I'm just saying that if that is a concern that we all have about our shared community, our resources, and the air we breathe, and the water we drink, and our power grid, then we also should be turning to our attention to those legislative bodies out in the county and beyond, so, thank you. The next item on our agenda is the report of the mayor. She could not be here this evening, and I did deliver some comments that she shared with me earlier. Next item was a report of President of Council, which we moved to the beginning of the meeting. So the next item is comments from council. Any council comments this evening?
Council President, if I may.
Councilor Arroyo.
Just very briefly, I wanted to thank our folks for coming out tonight to continue to advocate for how we want our community to be built in the future and sharing information. Also love the graphics that were also brought up here earlier, so thank you for your hard work on that. One thing I do want to express is, one of my biggest frustrations since serving on council is the realization that many things that affect, directly affect the quality of life of our residents sometimes doesn't fall within control of council. One of the things that has come up in the last couple of months is the Pennsylvania Rape Pair Protection Act, which I believe has been floating around in the state senate, which would hold data centers specifically responsible for the energy consumption that they consume and not pass along the burden to residential rape pairs. That is something that, as I know council here is advocating individually to our state representatives and state senators. I would implore that all of you also do the same. They are listening to you, and a lot of the regulations that come with data centers will have to come from the state level. Municipalities won't be able to do this on their own. So as mentioned, while the City of Lancaster is currently dealing with us, other municipalities have also been proposed with data centers, and if it just falls right outside the boundary of Lancaster City, it is, it continues to be outside of our control, but will still affect all of you. So highly, highly encourage you all to continue to advocate, not just only to us and hold us accountable, but make sure you're also doing it on the state level, because that's really where we're going to be able to have some influence on data centers and how they affect our communities from now into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilor Arroyo. We have now reached the conclusion of our agenda. I will hear a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Hi. We're adjourned.